I was thinking, well, the great film. You know, they have different things.
Yeah, but they, they, they don't keep watch.
Mike. Mike's alive.
He's a good one.
I'm not going back to prison, you don't care.
Ladies and gentlemen, we could call a meeting through the quarter. Um, seven o'clock is, uh, would you start with the pleasure of leasing? I mean, far away.
Well, I, United States of America, so we are other, which is hands, one nation, united as one.
It's been very normal. Pretty much the rules of the house, you know where we're sitting on the facts, best and right. We don't have an argument to be issued here tonight. Um, and we do have some people on the, um, the hybrid Zoom meetings. And, um, so you can just give them a little bit of time so that they get acknowledged what's going on. Does not get blocked by our comments and stuff, that's really a grateful thing. But I would like to start off this meeting first recognizing one of our planning board members for being one of the longest serving public servants in the town of Lloyd. And this will be his last meeting tonight, um, from what I'm hearing. And I'm thinking it's somewhere around thirty-four, thirty-five years, thirty-five years. So with that being said, I couldn't tell you, um, how grateful we are to have had you on the board for as many years, mentoring as many people on the board. Whether it's Twitter Dan Larry, I truly should put in all the. Um, but I can't say how grateful I am to at least have had you here and after me a little bit, not just here, but in the devices. So we're not, uh, we're not in the fog yet. Larry, do you have anything to say? Present your. Thank you. So the meeting definitely calls a order now. First thing on the agenda is, um, we have a public hearing, which is open for a resume machine. Do we have anyone here who'd like to speak to that tonight? Oh, I apologize, that's right, wrong meeting. So, um, if I could have somebody approve, uh, make a motion for two minutes on last month.
Oh.
Thank you. And now it would be your turn.
All in favor?
Uh, and I am really, um, not in the spot today. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition, any opposed? Any objections? Motion to pass. Brooks?
Good evening. And yes, it has been a pleasure working with you for ten, fifteen years. And then as a teacher, I knew, take them in. For either of us. Yes. Um, so we have the application of a quid need machine for a restaurant to drive through, not drive through, by bus, um, restaurant. Um, we have the four units that we are proposing. I believe we, you know, in the presentation at a workshop meeting, um, where the public hearing was opened just a few weeks ago, we did have one public comment at that point, two times, of Mr. Sadafi. Um, I believe that Mr. Ellis has been in touch with him to try to alleviate as many return requests we could regarding that. I know he's concerned about the fact that the property's been vacant and not well taken care of over the past however many years. So I think hopefully this site plan will address the majority of those complaints.
Can I ask one question now, I'm just not clear. If it says it's food truck to take out service only, is there no seating area upstairs?
That's correct because of the parking that we have, we don't want, or will not allow people to sit there and eat.
They, they, that's your drive, we're in the car.
Yeah, they can't even stay in the car if they're in the weed, in the maximum weed we put fifteen or twenty of them with the limitations.
I think we had all addressed that in one of the meetings, um, Bill, because we didn't want people coming off of the highway and having that same time on the highway inside the road. I think it was addressed like that, like when it first came on, that was the issue. Anyone else who's saying? Our direction from here now is going to, is the draft resolution, the sure DAF is one of the ones to draft. I would do that, yeah.
I got one question. At the last, at the last meeting, there was an issue with the hours. We weren't sure whether they're going to be at ten o'clock or eleven o'clock, is that the right spot?
I thought that we had decided at the meeting last month that the hours of operation that was listed on the map and.
I think it was eleven.
I think it was eleven.
Or acceptable to the board. If that, if that's not correct, let me know now. I believe that was addressed at the last meeting.
And now go back to, is there anyone from staff that wants anything? Anyone on the board? Motion to close the public hearing.
All in.
I'm going to go one.
Thank you.
Second. Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? And we're hearing closed.
If you'd like, I'll go through the part two. Um, so, uh, you all, you all know the questions, I'm going to read them again. Uh, the answers are no or small impact or moderate to large impact. Will the proposed action create a material comp with adopted land use plan or zoning regulation?
No.
Will the proposed action result in a change in the use or intensity of use of land?
Yeah.
Small, you know, it, it, so will the proposed action impair the character or quality of the existing community?
Yeah.
Will the proposed action have an impact on the environmental characteristics? We don't have any CEA, CEAs in town, so that's a no. Will the proposed action result in an adverse change in the existing level of traffic or affect existing infrastructure for mass transit, biking or walking?
Small.
Small. Will the proposed action cause an increase in use of energy and fails to incorporate reasonably available energy conservation, renewable energy opportunities? Will the proposed action impact existing public or private water supplies?
Yeah.
Public, private wastewater treatment?
Yeah.
The proposed action impair the character or quality of important historic, archaeological, architectural, or aesthetic resources?
Yeah.
The proposed action result in an adverse change to natural resources, wetlands, water bodies, groundwater, or quality of forward form?
Small. Small.
The proposed action result in an increase in the potential for erosion, flooding, or drainage problems? The proposed action created a hazard to environmental resources or human health? Depends on the level of heat and the power. Looking forward.
Paul, do you want to, um, do our resolution?
So you need to appear that, uh, draft speakers, resolutions, report installation, whereas clauses describe the project, talk about who, oh, sorry. Uh, whereas clauses describe the project, uh, contents of the application, and how it's gone through the secret process, it applies to that process, including any just on to the, uh, part two, uh, when we promote all this needing, uh, resolved. Thereabouts, with the chair?
Yeah.
Okay. Now therefore be it resolved that the planning board approves the FPAF part one, two, and three, and the chairman has authorized to sign part three of the FPAF on behalf of the planning board. And be it further resolved if the planning board issues a two or negative declaration for the proposed project, including that it will not be any significant adverse marginal impact, and that a draft marginal impact statement will not be shared. And be it further resolved if the planning board directs filing on this negative declaration as required by six hundred and one CNI, section six seventeen point twelve, and be it further resolved that this resolution shall take effect immediately.
Motion to. Thank you, Larry, second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion to pass. Paul, one more?
The point we evolved, uh, through the draft, include the resolutions for the site line, uh, for the resume, the theme book. Uh, whereas clauses talks about the application, the nature of the project, the authority of the planning board to review the project under the zoning code, uh, the fact that you had just adopted a two or negative declaration, and it applies your seizure. And that you held your public hearing and you closed it. So, uh, the data can move to the resolved clauses.
Yes, okay.
Now therefore be it resolved that based on the application, first since the zoning code, section one hundred dash fifty-three in New York State Town Law two seventy-four A eight, the planning board hereby appies project and the chairman of the planning board has authorized to pl- sign the final site plans to the project upon receipt of the following items. Confirmation that any remaining permits by the town engineer have been satisfied, copies of all other agency approvals required for the project, and confirmation of payment to the town of any and all outstanding estro or other fees. And be it further resolved that it's required by New York State Town Law, uh, two seventy-four A eight, a copy of this resolution shall be filed in the town of Lloyd Court's office. Within five days after this resolution has been adopted, and a copy of this resolution shall be sent to the applicant. And be it further resolved that prior to the issuing of the building permit for the project, pre-construction immediately held in the town's building sector, any building engineer, and the construction contract. Be it further resolved that this resolution shall take effect immediately.
And a motion?
Motion.
Second?
One second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any, uh, any opposed? Any extensions? None, motion to pass also.
Justin, Patty's here, you want to do Elm?
Yep. That's next.
Oh, there, great. Bye. Go ahead.
We have Elm Street, the applicant seeking a modification of conditions of approval resolution. Patty?
Uh, yes, the applicant has been working with their attorney and speaking to the town about, uh, what the requirements are with regard to the transportation corporation. And my understanding is that it was, um, resolved that because the sewer line is a private line and not part of the public municipal sewer system, um, that this could be achieved through easement rather than a transportation corporation. So we are seeking a revision to the conditions on the original approval, um, requesting that change. Yeah?
Yeah, I guess just to, as a point of clarification, um, there legally, uh, the transportation corporation was the appropriate method for achieving, dealing, dealing with private lines, it, it, the shared lines. Technically, the transportation corporation, that's the best approach. It's, it's sort of the Belton's suspenders, it's what, and the law is in place to kind of deal with this sort of situation. Um, as a practical matter, um, we've, you know, looked at it and advised the town that we could, we could work, to achieve the same effect, legal effect, through easement. So even though technically, we were, we were on the right track during the transportation corporation in the first place, we can do this. And, and it saves a lot of headaches and costs for the applicant, a lot of headaches for the town board, because this all has to go through the town board. Um, and really you're only dealing with two lines. So if you have an easement and you've had this relationship, it's kind of like a driveway easement. Uh, it's basically a shared maintenance responsibility. Um, that'll achieve the same goal. So, um, I redrafted, I drafted an amended resolution with language that would make that change from the requirement of the transportation corporation to the requirement of easement, easement will be drafted by the applicant's attorney. Uh, we will review it, um, and we'll make sure that it, uh, but the firm has some experience in having done this before, so if we need to provide some, uh, you know, help in terms of what that needs to contain, uh, you know, we, you can do that. Just make sure that it covers all of the eventualities that the town would be concerned about. So that we, we recommend moving forward with this amended resolution before it's discussed.
And do you have anything? I don't, I'll defer to Paul's.
And, and I appreciate Paul's clarification because this was kind of obviously not within my, um, my value.
Hey, it's my understanding, I talked to Jay a couple times, um, several times in the last couple of weeks, it is his intention to eventually separate the lines, um, when he subdivides himself, the Elm's and the Wondernet, which actually is a certain better in the long run, have a separate line, uh, he has engineering in hand, I've seen that. Uh, once we get, you know, to that stage, it'll go through that process. Um, but this is, the easement is sort of the quick way. The transportation corporation requires town board approval, then it goes to the Secretary of State, so the process sends the drag out. Um, and this, and if this achieves the same end, we should be good to go. Yeah, we have, we have, there's actually engineering crafted for it.
So do we have the legal easement agreement?
It's a, uh, it's part of the condition.
It would be a condition under the. And Paul would have to approve that, he would, chairman, he signs.
Yeah, Scott, you signed the plaque.
It's just hard to read on here, but that's what it's.
Here.
Even the big word draft.
So the two proposed changes, the two clauses is, um, and it's whereas, you know, that is that, uh, references to prior people on the G three third, and the question amendment with respect to the conditions to obtain the shared sewer line. And then under the conditions, uh, that, uh, would have to be satisfied before the children sign the plaque. And first one, the affirmation by the planning board attorney, that an updated plaque of proposed easement will ensure shared real ownership and responsibility for the common climate sewer line for the two rocks.
Do you want to read through all things? I just, just a change, right?
Yeah.
Motion to accept?
I guess, Larry, so.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Any opposition?
I'm not opposed, I just don't see enough copies.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I have a copy of it.
So we can't read it, it's blacked out, so.
No, that's a good one.
I'll, I'll put on. Any, um, I think it's, any, um, opposition? See none, any extension? All favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion to pass.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, sure. Well, everybody have a good reason.
Yeah, go ahead.
Actually, next on the agenda is the village, the P R R D seeker review.
Evening Kelly, I hope with K R C planning.
John Burris, the town man, writer.
Okay, and I just want to tell you that I appreciate all the work that you've done. I was, um, the chair of the planning board in the state for some time. And I know it's a lot of work, not just sitting here, but sometimes we, we appreciate all that you've done. Um, Mr. Chairman, last, uh, I think it was two weeks ago, we ran the workshop. Um, and at that time, we provided the board with a complete submission. Um, we reviewed that submission and all the additional materials that we had provided you, which included a number of technical reports, uh, the updated visual and the techs. And then we brought our landscape for sixty, uh, the official. And at that meeting, there was a dialogue about judicial issues that the, uh, engineering consultants had. I think that those have been resolved with respect to the water, we did create the energy union's involvement agreement had been signed. Um, there was a minor question about, um, fire prevention, and we had discussed that. Uh, there were some depressives today on groundwater, and we discussed that. So at this time, um, I think we provide it to the, the, the attendants to, um, discuss the final conclusion of the seeker document.
Anything to say?
Yeah, so, um, as far as the water and sewers concerns, um, they've received an updated water and sewer engineering report. Um, that details the, uh, water supply design for the project. Uh, and confirmed the fire flow, we provided as required flow rate and pressures, as well as domestic fluids. So, um, I'm, I'm, I'm satisfied with that. Um, we received a, a full SWIP, um, design, uh, that was very comprehensive. Um, actually maybe a little too comprehensive. Um, so we had to ask for some modifications to that. Um, once we receive that, we review it. Um, and found today some minor, um, issues that need to be addressed. And L S C was able to, to work with us, and we, we got some sketches that satisfied those concerns. Um, as with respect to the design of the summer management practices. I since reviewed those late this afternoon, and, um, I'm satisfied that the, the design standard had met with those sketches. So I, I think we're, I'm, I think we're ready to, to move forward.
Paul, or Jay? Paul, with Paul over first.
He's much better looking.
Okay, uh, so procedurally where you are, uh, again, uh, there's two things that the planning board, uh, needs to do. The first is to make a seeker determination. And the second is to make recommendations back to the town board, uh, with respect to the P R R D. What we drafted for the board's consideration, um, is a, uh, negative declaration, uh, based on the discussions that have been had and the information that's been provided by the applicant. Um, and that's for the board's consideration and discussion. We have an approval resu- approval resolution for the negative declaration that the board would provide to, uh, go down that path. Um, then we've also drafted a memorandum from the planning board, decided by the chair, uh, that we go see the Ellen board. It was part of the recommendation to require, uh, by the P R R D regulation. And we have a resolution that would read that memo and, uh, require its transmission to the town board. Um, and as I said from the outset, um, the, the seeker review that you're doing and the recommendations, the considerations that you're looking at under the P R R D regulation, they're fairly parallel. Um, so as I'm sure you've seen, as you look through the documents, how there's a lot of similarities in terms of the overall assessment. Um, once if the board, uh, approves a negative declaration and recommends, uh, makes its recommendations back to the town board, the town board will then, uh, take up the application. Um, it will not need to do its own seeker review, because that law has already been done. Uh, the town board has deferred to the planning board, uh, so that she receives a seeker review. Uh, and the town board has then focused on the application and the consider, the considerations that are provided in the P R R D regulation and make the decision on whether or not, uh, to adopt a local law that would establish the P R R D as proposed, or perhaps is modified, uh, based on discussions, uh, within the town board. Um, they will also have a public hearing, of course, on the actual adoption of the local law. Um, so that there will be additional public process. They, they will not be doing their own seeker review. It will be relying on the seeker review and determination that's been made by the planning board. Uh, once, uh, it's, if the P R R D is adopted by the town board, um, in order for the, uh, project to move forward, the applicant will need to come back to the planning board for site plan review. And as part of that site plan review, you get more into the, some of the technical, you know, difficult technical details, uh, that, that come along with the approval of the project. Um, being the architecture, landscaping, um, and more of the details of water and sewer and that sort of thing. Um, but, you know, I, I guess, and I won't speak for Andy, but I, I, I feel like we, we, we're at a point where we feel like sufficient information's been provided for the board to make the determination, um, based on seeker. Um, and that, uh, the applicant's provided, uh, answers to all of the, uh, impact related questions that, that we see.
Yeah, I agree.
Andy?
Sure, uh, as part of, um, our effort to kind of make it a little easier on you, we did supply you guys tonight and last week, the last meeting with the old of part two, uh, that's in your hands. Um, if you, I, I'm sure you've all, uh, spent a great deal of time like we have, uh, going over them and over them. Um, I'm glad I didn't have to do the SWIP, um, with Andy's theme, because four thousand pages is a lot of stuff. Uh, if you recall, in your previous determination, um, the, uh, the areas of the part two where you found, um, moderate to large impacts to occur, or the impact on land. But perhaps it'd be better if we went through the neck deck. If you went through the neck deck, um, by item, uh, to see if anything popped out at you that, you know, related to the, the part two, you know, that you wanted to discuss or think about.
Probably should have a discussion on it first. Are we going to do a regular read through and evaluation of the?
Well, I guess the question for you, uh, for the board is, um, we could, I mean, the, the, the question for the board is, is the proposed project significantly different than the original project? And do the changes, whatever they are, amount in your mind something that was, that could result in an adverse environmental impact? My favorite one?
Yeah, I, I think, um, Dave, put, put it out there, uh, very well. Um, in the prior review under seeker, and you'll remember, we published that two or three meetings going through the seeker part two. And, you know, there was some initial discussion, and again, you, you talked about it. Okay, so there's potential moderate to large impact. And then the question was, that, so you went through and identified some of those. The, the place where you ultimately decided where, where there was a potential for moderate to large impact was with respect to the land. And it was primarily focused on, uh, slopes over fifteen percent. And that was sort of the primary focus. What as, as you changed those in the part two, as I recall, um, and, and, you know, based on what you have here, there were other impacts that were identified. But they were all found to be known to minimal impact. So for example, uh, visual impacts. There are visual impacts that would come along with the P R R D, that you found that were known to minimal impact. So, uh, same with plants and animals, there were impacts, plants and animals, that were, you know, it's a small impact.
And soil.
And then on and on, same with anger, cultural resources, and, and, uh, that one is tagged out under legal health, right?
That we put.
Exactly, yeah. And so, you know, I guess a threshold question for the board is having a review of the application that's in front of you. Um, are you still comfortable with your prior part two review? Or do you see any other, uh, moderate to large impacts that, uh, you didn't identify then, but you think should be identified now? That's sort of the threshold discussion point.
Right, we should probably ask the board if there's anything just jumped out at them. Um, in the last submission from the applicant, um, you know, going through it, did anything else stick out? Almost a month, or at least a month now, looking at it sober, maybe somebody has something to say or to add? I don't know. Anybody?
Yeah, I do.
Carl?
I, I would think, uh, the issues that Paul mentioned would mitigate.
Certainly, if you're, with as many times as they spoke to, time and time and one, what you're thinking, yeah? Yeah, but if there's anything else that can, anything new or different that maybe someone spotted in the last, um, evaluation and submission that they gave, so. Anybody, nothing? Anyone? Derek? No? All right, so here we also.
So, so, uh, what I would propose, and all Andy and the board can tell me to go upon rocks, is if the board is comfortable with their previous part two, um, in terms of the things that you selected, I would simply move them on to a new, a blank part two, and I have some copies here for you to look through it. Um, and then that would be the document that would be attached to the negative declaration. Um, you know, it, it affects nothing, you haven't, you haven't determined anything else has been added to the list of things that might be, you know, address environmental impacts. Right? Good?
We didn't include the part two, so part one, they dropped part two in the application. So if you wanted to use that, I'd rather.
Right, and the part two we submitted, just check the same box that everybody checked back in May of last year.
Right.
So, yeah.
That's it.
We basically just take what you did before, unless there's anything different.
I think, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, that's the way we're, we're going to do it. I've already been submitted that one. You want to go over it, or just, or?
Uh, uh, I think, um, quite frankly, for the record, I think it's wise that we went through the, the items itself. Impact on land, this is a nice discussion beyond, you know, um, the items that have been listed here. Uh, some of them that Paul mentioned earlier were constructs on steep slopes. That was identified as a, um, moderate to, 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 to large impact. Um, you know, it, we think that they've done a pretty good job. You know, I'll let Andy, who's the guy about that, I mean, Andy was doing with Stonewater today, that was in some of those areas, so, um, and soil erosion, I mean, all those bits and pieces, they're all right here on the, um, magnet that you have, construction lasting over a year, we know it's going to happen. Um, but if anybody has any questions?
And, yeah, I do obviously have a question. So you said there's no change, but if there's a copy line change? Sort of is Jay that there's some copy line change intended, so that will be a change. I know we have, we have additional things. Just the two things.
Two changes from the neck deck last year?
Yeah.
Um, I, I think actually the acreage for the neck deck last year, I think was all of it was included. Seven acres, so we got compensated a lot of line change back in May of two thousand twenty-one. Okay, um.
All right, so that was the, so that was the ten.
It only changes the number, really the number of.
Correct, and that was because of the formal housing and reclamation.
What, what you can, what we can do if you'd like, and we can have, spend little or much time on this as you want. If you look at the draft, maybe the declaration itself, and go to, uh, the third page, uh, that's the first, uh, impact area, which is impact on land. And, uh.
Second page.
Almost like you're driving, Paul. You're missing seven.
Oh, it's like the page.
They've gone out here.
Uh, we're back.
What's different?
Yes, because yours is on one side, right? No?
It's, it's, we all know the one is impact on land, actually.
You have to hear from, that's April.
Yeah.
There it is. On the page two.
Good for Paul. It'd be a heart attack.
Sure, start here and, um, what, Andy can kind of talk a little bit about, however he's willing.
Sure, no, that's fine.
I just want you to know that.
Um, you know, so, impact on land, the first on this construction of steep slopes, um, over fifteen percent. Um, you know, they're, they still do have some, you know, work proposed in those areas, but I think they've avoided them as best as they can, based on my review. Um. Soil erosion, just like last time, you asked them to double erosion seven control practices. Um, we've asked them to, because in the SWIP, you're allowed to go over five acres of permission. We've asked them, we've said that, you know, when they're in, when they're disturbing steep slopes, they're not allowed to do that, they have to remain within that five acre limit. And they provided paving plans, which obviously they do it that way. Um.
Hours, uh, two time construction lasting over a year. You can recall there was a special use permit that you issued for the assistance of the facility. You put in, uh, days and hours of construction. So, uh, the, the proposal is essentially to do something similar with the P R R D.
Right, yeah, yeah, that was the first pair. Sorry, I'll fix that. Um. So like I said, at, at, you know, they provided a SWIP, um, that, that meets the requirements of, of the C D permit. Um, you, you, Paul just touched on the construction lasting over a year. Impacting geological features, um, we said that there's no unique land currents there we'd be concerned about. Impact on surface water, this is the, the big one that, that the SWIP was with. Um, based on our review, um, they have met all the water quality standards. Um, we require them to, um, infiltrate a hundred percent of the water quality along the river design. Um, technically, they're allowed, we're, we're allowed to give them a break on that, but in this case, we did not. Um, they're showing that they can do that. They're also showing that they're meeting sheet water, sheet, sheet discharge requirements and part of your storm, part of the design requirement. So they've done everything that they, that we've asked them to do with respect to that. Um, we're also, they have, um, in, in some of their practices, they have pipes to discharging, um, offsite. Um, requiring them to provide bubble spreaders, uh, to turn that back into sheet flows, it doesn't create any erosion issues downstream. Um, and they're also preserving, um, pennies of, um, is that the term? Yeah, pennies of, um, uh, land along the saltwater. But also preserve that, that, that stream. Um, did I miss anything in this one?
Yeah.
That was another thing. Um, impacts to groundwater, um, typically, this one really is applied to septic systems and wastewater. There are none, because the project is connecting. There are none because the project is connecting to the sewer system. As I mentioned, the SWIFT does require competition of wastewater. That will be treated with quality so that there won't be any uncontaminants introduced into the groundwater as a result of that system. I'm not sure why water is included in this one, but it is. Water supply, it will to town and that will supply to connect the development. It provides a water to the development. As I mentioned before, they've shown with water modeling that the project can be supplied with domestic and water fire flow, that is fire pressure flows. And in accordance with N F D. Which is the governing body for that. Impacts on flooding. The project is not within a hundred year floodplain. It's actually, you've got the five hundred floodplain. The SWIFT has the findings for that, but will also help mitigate any flooding issues downstream. Impacts on air, we said that they weren't on. Impact on plants and animals. Have a habitat, habitat suitability assessment, maybe Paul you want to talk about this one?
No, I mean, basically, the applicant has done its assessment. They agree in respect to cutting trees to abide by the suitable requirements for protection of major threatened habitat. The B E C has, and this is one of the recent pieces of information, B E C has incurred that there really aren't any endangered threatening or rare species on the project site. So that was additional information is provided based on October third, two thousand twenty-two email from B E C. We've been through previously impact on agricultural resources and identified that compared to the amount of agricultural land to the town. This is overall minor. The project site is zoned for commissal residential development. And soils on project site are contaminated, using their vital diet for agricultural purposes. And the proposed action supports the comprehensive goals with providing affordable housing to the Asian population and will reduce or increase residential more developer in the town as well as eliminating the rural portion. The impact on aesthetic resources. We had visual simulations that were done before. Those had been updated and they were provided for. There will be some visual impact on the project. You'll be able to see it from various locations at a different times of year. However, whether or not those are significant adverse impacts, that's a board's determination that mitigated those impacts in a number of different ways. The folks mitigated in a number of different ways, including the architecture, the landscaping, the removal more of the residential component of the PRRD further off the steep slopes. So notes in the mitigation measures that they proposed. And if you all wanna talk about any of these as we go through, please stop us. So that's aesthetic impacts. Impact on historic and archaeological resources. It essentially just brought over from the prior negative declaration. The same findings with respect to historic and archaeological resources. Based on the work that's been done by the applicant. Impact on open space recreation, there are no public open space recreational uses of this property, it's private property. And so there won't be any loss of recreational opportunities. It's a former orchard, it's contaminated. And there will be some permanent conservation of open spaces. Andy mentioned in the vicinity of salt cell, pretty. Impact on critical environmental areas. There are a few, other designated critical environmental areas that are listed by the U S A D E C. There is no critical environmental area that the city would decide. So there is not being impact on T E A. Impact on transportation, I'm gonna turn it back over.
So transportation, as we mentioned in previous meetings, the applicant is still proposing improvements to Route nine W and their drive, adding a traffic signal. Despite the slight reduction in traffic counts, that's good, we're still planning, close to that. They're also proposing to add a significant amount of sidewalk along Route nine W with three four hundred meter deep as a real benefit to the town and development. Little service, I'm not gonna go into that, but basically the mitigation, the improvements are gonna mitigate, to mitigate any impacts of traffic that would be resulting in development. Hang on, anything else we should mention on traffic?
Make it safe. Make that, make that, lucky, I almost saw an accident yesterday. I thought she was, I thought she was gonna get killed. She pulled right out, and I thought, I thought that truck was gonna go right through.
Um, impact on energy. There's none, none, it goes, gonna comply with the current energy codes. Impacts on noise over in light. Gonna generate some, some dust and odors during construction, but post-construction, there won't be none. Lighting will be dark skies compliant and fully shielded, preventing offsite glare or impacts of light trespass. Impacts on human health. This is, as we mentioned before, related to contaminated soil that's on site. We received a soil management plan that we reviewed and found to be acceptable to manage those soils and protect the drought and many potential issues as a result of those. Wanna talk about consistent?
Sure. So if the proposed action here would support the town's comprehensive plan goals for providing housing for the Indian population and would also research and mental development or density in the more developed area of town. The entire PRRD would potentially provide an opportunity for local persons of age sixty two and over to age in place and transition from living independently to an existing living facility in the same location. A L F and residential development of permissible uses. And the PRRD would be built person to overlay district by the town board. Subject to additional site cover due by the planning board. Minimizing traffic impact, residential development on major roads, also a top end planning goal. And just discuss whether mitigation will actually help to improve the existing conditions with respect to traffic in the town. Finally, consistent to community character. The action is still inconsistent if you picked up the along the commercial corridor and the findings that you made with respect to the special use limit, the existing living facility. It's consistent with that commercial floor. The independent housing units are essentially a residential neighborhood. That's one of the main goals that the board has sort of articulated from the outset. So it's no different in many respects than this surrounding neighborhood. So that, from, in terms of this draft negative declaration, we suggest that if the project consists of community character. That's the draft that we survived it. The board's consideration, any changes that you believe might be necessary. But in the provided in the draft, who knows the issue, the negative that we make. That, again, just a small bit of reviewing the team, which basically articulate, provide the super process and actually need and that's the dot in this negative declaration. And requiring it to be properly noticed and environmental noticeful and filed with all of the different involved and interested agencies that have been identified previously assumed by the planning board and if they're involved in the board leaders, use public actions. It would provide, it would be binding on all of those agencies. So any additional approvals that need to be made by the U S A D O T, U S A D E C, the town board, any other agency, they would be bound by the schedule of termination with respect to.
Right. So we could, at this point, do the NAGDEC resolution now?
You can do that if you wish.
I think the board, the board got any other questions or any, anything you wanna interject?
We have a few notes. Under community character, we had a previous discussion about ambulance service being impacted by the facility, and we had talked about possibly the developer paying part of that cost. So I don't think that's addressed. So most of my notes here are basically things I don't think are addressed in the NAGDEC property. So that's one item that I had. I also found that. Under construction, slopes, sidewalks, I'm not sure about because there are five percent in the PRRD zone, but ten percent on the plan. I don't know what, you know, the solution is to that because of the case of this logo of the site. It's a ten percent road that's got ten percent sidewalks. Question about the number three. I guess, basically, it does here, measures for long-term monitoring and maybe form order measures. So I guess that's some kind of like agreement or something that, that all, all of, are you?
Yeah, that's, that's actually a standard somewhere management agreement the town has which is required for all swaps. Any, any, any project with a permit somewhere management, like this has to have that agreement.
If you don't mind, hit the first two questions. First question is about the ambulance. Do you wanna have them address that right now? I, I, I would think it would be better to get answers right away, so you're not talking.
If you want your question.
You know, as far as the ambulance, you know, the project's going to contribute to the tax base. So, you know, the taxes that are generated will go towards the ambulance. You know, their budget.
So.
Did you have your own on-site?
I was proposed that one time, did I have any?
That's, I, I thought I remember. Yeah.
Scott, I've had discussions with the supervisor and some town board members related to the ambulance in this project. The town board members and supervisor who I've spoken to are in favor of them not supplying it. And the way mobile life, way the agreement with the town works is the more calls mobile life has, the lower the cost of the town. Those members of the town board who I've spoken to about this anticipate that mobile life will have more calls because it's a senior facility with A L F. And therefore, they anticipate and hope that the cost of the town supplying mobile life will go down.
And the time taken from the village, from the villages, where an ambulance is going there, I don't know how the ambulance would be.
They, they backfill, so there's two in town, but they backfill all over.
And you go.
The town that was not to supply.
Say that one more time.
One, they use more flights, so they just, they just, and that costs the town.
But they are using mobile life, aren't they?
They'll use whoever, so whoever the town has.
Whoever the town uses. So I guess the more use they're getting, like if they're getting paid from town to them. You know what I mean, that, that much.
The town's gonna, town's gonna have the ambulance anyway.
That's what they're gonna have.
We're gonna have the ambulance, that's sort of what, part of our.
But it's because it'd be called more, right?
The goal, the hope is that the cost will go down due to the increase in call.
No.
Well, we're supposed to consider it as an impact. Yeah. It's in the word.
Your next question was welcome.
Okay, this is a question, are we, how many acres of forest taken out? Ten or more or none? Because there's a, there's a threshold. And I know it's in the, I know it's in the documentation. I think it's.
So there's no, there's no change between the.
I don't know if this is a change or not, if you can correct me. I did see under, I went over the impact on aesthetic resources. The east side of the site is going to be twelve foot high retaining wall across the front of the development, basically, to support that first row of houses, I have three hundred point of people. So anyway, that's, I, I did feel that was absolutely best. The negative separation. Okay, it's not noted under thirteen, impact on transportation, that there are more than five hundred parking spaces in that threshold impact on the farm. I noted level of service F. And this is my claim, nine W from the court, the traffic report. That's a question.
With respect to the retaining wall from the.
Go after.
The structural impact. I think what we're talking about on this negative declaration is the speaker review. What has significantly changed in that or those changes? So there was the retaining wall and the same wall. But the question is, has it been modified? Has it been tested by the current treatment?
Now, is there a level left before the trafficway is put in? I believe that's filled.
I think it's F now.
It's F now?
Yeah, didn't we do this with Stewart? Didn't we do this with? Didn't we do this with Stuart off the look? Regardless, it's.
There's a level of that there.
We understand there's traffic impact, right?
I'm not missing, you're having. I don't particularly agree with the thing that the community has brought before. And I think the main thing is that overall level of service. Overall improvements that were proposed in is an overall focus of the project. And then that same level existed on the fire secret review. So this project isn't resulting in any further degradation.
Agreed. Of the community character, I have the houses for the PRRD are, they are five feet apart.
So in the code, there's a building code requirement. And so structure to structure. Or not five feet apart, but where you have structure to provide, so our situation for the five feet apart. And all of these to find the result.
They don't.
They don't.
Yeah, anyway, so these are by now, see why I won't be supporting.
Yeah, I got a question for all. In your rule of recommendation, you mentioned interested agencies. But I don't believe you included them in this recommendation. Is it necessary to include the interested agents in this?
They, they identified in the, yeah, yeah, part one.
So it doesn't need to, this is a technical question, I wanted to break it up for sound.
Right.
Usually with this, I thought we would include it.
We can add that.
Yeah, I would appreciate it. As much as they are.
Yeah, no, we actually, right there, right there. The park is a negative declaration.
Oh, and then they.
So it's on the neg deck itself.
Doesn't need, it doesn't need to be put in this tool to.
It's up to you if you, yeah.
It's a legal question, legally.
Personally, I think we're okay.
Okay.
Yeah. And we'll make sure this is the thing. Root of agencies that we've sent around, notice that you're intended to be the lead agent.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I have a.
Sure.
My, my question sort of related to what, what we were talking about, what Carl was talking about, add to the memo. And I would prefer that the neg deck be attached to the memo would be incorporated by Brooklyn. Just, this I've just mentioned because there's a lot of stuff in the neg deck which is like. It has four or five pages on, one of the answers that enters into memo in one paragraph. So I think that's a lot missing. That the town board would probably have one place.
Be like, they understand, there's every.
Absolutely, good idea.
From boy to warrior.
Well, one retired, retired.
Retired, right. Larry, you got anything? Nothing?
I'm good.
D O T, nothing's, nothing's, nothing's changed in far as in twenty two.
Correct. If they're, they're waiting, they need the final decision and they can. So we have this permit from them for the work of them right away. And then we could, we can leave it to the nation to watch if it's completed, we can finalize permits to D O T. We've gotten as far as we can with them on the approval of the drawings and the.
I think what you're, when you say work on the right away right now, you're referring to utility, right?
Just a question, maybe unrelated, go ahead. Vehicle traffic. Traffic lanes.
We have not received the permit yet.
They won't pull the trigger until neg deck. It just won't do it.
My question's going to be more about the A L F while I'm here, just want to ask a question. Have we gotten any further with the interstate approvals for that?
Easy. No, 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 it's department health.
Department of Health, A L F. Little under date, go ahead. Well, I guess we can go on with the, the negative, right?
It's like, there's a draft resolution that's prepared and is provided for the board. Again, it talks about receivers defined. And we need to resolve that its follow ups. As the planning board think the F D A F parts one, two, and three. And the term is authorized, the fine part three of the F D A F on behalf of the planning board. That the planning board is to make that in the action. Including that the act will not be there, existing ever to cardinal impact. And draft cardinal impact statement will not be prepared. And the planning board adopts and incorporates during by reference, the attached written negative declaration to the action. And be a further resolved as planning board's direct secretary to file, distribute. And publish the attached negative declaration as required by six N Y C R R six seventeen point twelve of the C P regulations. And be a further resolved that this resolution shall take effect immediately.
You have a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I've got a roll call.
Aye, I'll do that. Um, I'll do a roll call. Larry Hammond?
Yes.
Carl De Lorenzo?
Aye.
Tom Cuthy?
No.
Charlie Long?
Yes.
Franco Zanning?
Yes.
Jerry Marion?
No.
Land, we don't need Landros and Bill, we can do it anyways.
Just for Fonzie?
Landros? And William Metzger?
Aye.
And Scott McCarthy's eye. No. Pass, this question is passed. Resolution, that's your bank. And if you could do the second, the recommendation to the town board?
Just to introduce that, the recommendation, one with memorandum. That was the, that's been in from the air. Through the town board on behalf of the planning board. The recommendations are based on the board's having reviewed the considerations. That are provided for a, a, I mean, a rule of a PRRD. Which is based on the applications that's been done. And based on the negative declarations that you just adopted. You should bring the memo, as you can see, just goes through each of the considerations that are provided in the regulations. And then as proposed findings with respect to each of those considerations. They are largely, as I said, parallel to the secret review that you just reviewed. And as a member of Nelson just pointed out. There's references to the secret negative declaration that you just adopted that are in here. One of the things that was recommended by Mr. Nelson was that we. Incorporate the negative declaration by reference into these, into this recommendation memo. So that it would go along with the memo to the town board. Again, we prepared the exact resolution for the board. With consideration that identifies you are having gone through the considerations. As required by the PRRD regulations. This is not a rule or a denial. This is a recommendation that you're making to the planning board. And that you followed that process for making that recommendation. And that at the end of that process, the recommendation is. That you approve the attached memorandum. That you're sending, that you're submitting to the town board. And that the resolution takes effect immediately. And that it would direct Sarah to transmit the proposed recommendations to the town for, for the presentation for the town board. Going back to recommendations quickly, they, they conclude with, on page five. Make the following recommendations that. Like maybe the town board should consider the planning board's negative declaration. And the planning board's prior issued special implement for the assisted living facility. And then two, that based on the negative declaration and review of the proposed PRRD. Based on following the considerations that are provided by the zoning code. The planning board recommends the adoption of the proposed PRRD by the town board. So with that, if you'd like to mandate a motion, so we're.
Can I have a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Yeah.
Larry, thank you. I'm going to do a roll call on it just because. Larry Hammond?
Yes.
Carl De Lorenzo?
Aye.
Tom Cuthy?
No.
Charlie Long?
Yes.
Franco Zanning?
Yes.
Jerry Marion? Landros Valaris?
Yes.
William Nelson?
Aye.
Scott McCarthy's eye. The resolution is passed, so the recommendation to be forwarded on to the town board, everybody.
We will incorporate obvious negative statute of rights for that.
Thank you. Our next, as we go over to the town board, the reservation we've asked for before to continue the process.
Great holiday. Well, from all that being said, I like the motion and the ability to hold up and have Larry make the motion to the chair. Good job. Second?
We can just do how these, the, the, person and.
I need a pen.